They can hang stuff on the walls next year now, can't they?
Yeah.
That'll help.
They weren't allowed to hang stuff this year?
Uh-uh.
Why?
The contractor.
Something with the construction part of it, yeah, they couldn't.
Something with the paint, wasn't it?
Yeah, they couldn't hang anything on it here.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
We will call to order the Lamberton City Council regular meeting at City Hall for June ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty. First thing additions or deletions to the agenda.
All right, we are going to add an RCA, we'll add it at the top. For Lamberton Meats Building. At the top of RCA's, I should say. And then by the ambulance line, we'll go to ambulance resignation. And building and zoning is going to be more of a for your information about rezoning the old school location.
Anything else?
That should do it.
What you want to make?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Agenda accepted. Consent agenda approval of the minutes for the May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five City Council regular minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Okay.
Am I opposed? Minutes accepted. General business, Bolling is up first.
All right, you have packed agenda, so I'll go fast. Let me know if I gotta slow down. Uh, we'll think about pursuit of leverage funding. Uh, we'll go in the order that we got here. Uh, the applications into the USC of rural development and preliminary engineering report. Uh, we resubmitted that. Rural Development wanted the industrial park portions. Literally stricken through on there just, um, because of their water environmental program. That's a portion that they're not willing to fund, so. Did a literal strike through of that portion on those. Um, and then a couple of cost estimate updates and that sort of thing. There was a little bit of, uh, back and forth with rural development, uh, almost a month ago here. Just a couple of little edits, so that's promising. Uh, I think they're likely kind of trying to get that tuned up to be kind of top of the pile funding wise for them. What that means timing wise, uh, remains a little bit of a mystery, so. Um, but it's, I'd say it's encouraging in information.
What is, is there a possibility for this construction season or no?
Uh, it'd be pretty tight. Uh, if they showed up with a wheelbarrow full of money tomorrow, doable, but each passing week makes it just a little bit
Less likely.
tougher on that, so, um, so that's the story on that. Grove Street is really the part that they're kind of focused on with that. So that's rural development. Um, the, we talked a little bit before the meeting about, um, bonding. It sounds like the current proposal that should get some action in the special session today, uh, for a bonding bill is for seven hundred million dollars. And it does not include any, um, like specific project earmarks, um, as we've seen in some of the past bills that are a little bit larger ones, so. Um, as we were talking also before the meeting though, uh, that does bring some important funding to Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, which funds projects like yours. So that's an important thing, um, as well, even without a direct kind of earmark sort of thing, so. Um, I will continue to hold my breath, uh, until the end of the special session and we'll see where it lands. It's so far progress has been promising today. Um, it's kind of holding true to the, kind of the agreements that the, the party leaders have kind of put together between Democrats, Republicans, House, Senate, Governor, so that's encouraging. You can read all about it tomorrow, probably. Um, the Small Cities Development Program application, uh, that's a reminder on that one, that's for a six hundred thousand dollar grant for water, this water infrastructure that was submitted, um, on time in April here, so we're waiting for a decision on that. We haven't heard anything on the results of those, but that was submitted. Again, just as a reminder, that's one, that's like a two-part, the pre-application, and then they say, oh, you're competitive, please turn in your final, your full application, so that's the full application on that. Um, for the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, uh, intended use plan, and rewinding back a little bit to the project priority list. There's some submittals going on in there. That's the first, uh, big full color fold out there. Um, what we did is we took a look at where the known lead service lines were located. And we put together some possible water main phasing to submit, um, for those programs, um, the between Department of Health and Public Facilities Authority, the kind of the criteria they're looking at for a water main replacement project. Uh, if thirty percent of the service lines on that project, the ones that need replacement because they're lead service lines or galvanized service lines, uh, then that water main replacement project scores or is prioritized the same way as a lead service line. Uh, so that's, that's significant because it allows water main projects like, uh, the kind of rise to the top of what would be fundable. Provided Public Facilities Authority gets its funding in the bonding bill like we just talked about. So that's where these kind of fit together. So really looking at the kind of the map of all the lead service lines that are known and the unknowns and all, and water, you know, mains that need replacement. We came up with a couple of different phases that, that meet that thirty percent criteria. And so those are, uh, indicated in the kind of the red clouded areas, uh, phases two, three, and four. So those are in there. We just put the order based on the number of lead service lines that were on there. So the next, uh, couple of colored maps just show the lead service lines where they land. That's really about kind of throwing that on the, um, on the dartboard and seeing you have Public Facilities Authority and Department of Health say, yep, that seems like a nice idea. Here's what we look at for a funding package. That's kind of what that's about. So that's been submitted, uh, the, the, all, all of those have been submitted to the project priority list. And then the one that's identified as phase two there on that Second Avenue and Main Street, that's also been submitted to the intended use. So the difference between the two project priority lists is, hey, here are our projects, here's our needs, here's our cost. Keep us in mind, this is stuff we wanted to do. Intended use plan is, and would you please give us some money now to do it? So the, the first phase of lead service line replacement stuff, which we'll talk about a little bit more later, that was one that was submitted to the intended use plan last year for, and the construction hopefully this year. So that kind of gives you an idea of timing. Um. So that's, that's the all in that. Questions on that? It's really about saying, hey, here's, here's some projects we're interested in. How do you, how would you score this? And what sort of funding package could you, would you be able to offer? So. All of that kind of runs in parallel with the applications that are into rural development and they all is a thing that works together, so. Questions on that? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, congressionally directed spending requests, these would be federal earmarks in the United States government budget. Uh, you may recall that for the fiscal year twenty-five, uh, one, uh, Lamberton was on the list for a two million dollar appropriation. And you may also recall that there was no federal budget passed for fiscal year twenty-five. All these continuing resolutions, continuing resolutions. They've got a continuing resolution through the end of fiscal year twenty-five, which is in October. So where we're at on this is we're waiting to hear back on the Senate side. So that was included, um, on the Senate side. We've, we've heard back on the House side on a number of projects. We have not heard back on the Senate yet, uh, in the entirety. So we'll see where that one lands, but that would be where I would expect to see some activity perhaps. Uh, with just a couple of exceptions, most of the projects that have been submitted for uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-six are a recycle of those that were selected in twenty twenty-five. So if there's no change, then good thing. But we'll, but we'll see. It's, um, a little early to tell. On the House side, um, was not, was not, uh, selected by, uh, Representative Fishbach. I think in, in the House at least, um, and I don't, I don't know what the what the deal was on the Democratic side, but for the Republican representatives, they each got to have a maximum of fifteen projects. And so a lot of those, uh, fifteen that Fishbach brought forward were ones that she had brought forward the year before. When there was no federal budget, so. So we'll see what happens on the Senate side. Little different, little different beast, but time will tell. And that's, that's another one that's kind of quickly unfolding. That's one of those got to check right before I go to the meeting kind of thing. So, um, that's the, that's the latest on that. That could change as soon as tomorrow also. But again, I'll remind you, this is really about clearing that first step and getting included in a bill that's got to then get action in progress in the past versus, you know, continuing resolution. So. Uh, I'm not optimistic or pessimistic about, will that happen? Uh, it's way too early to tell, I'd say, so. Questions on that? Uh, I kept Grove Street on here so we don't lose track or forget, just with some of these things starting to kind of brew and bubble a little bit on the funding side. Just as a reminder to ourselves and everybody that that assessment, special assessment process would be something to, to start once that, once that project's got some funding going for it, so.
Can you help with that, right?
Oh, yes, for sure, no. Okay, lead service lines, this is the big, uh, the, the bigger update piece, round two of the Minnesota Department of Health Technical Assistance, uh, Inventory Technical Assistance Grant Program, um, those, uh, those applications, city applied to it. And just today, actually this morning, we got the, um, kind of the communication from MDH on, hey, put together a, a scope and budget for work in Lamberton, so that's good. This is on the inventory side. This is about resolving any of those unknowns. See, as you'll remember, you have a decade before Justin has to have all the lead service lines replaced and all the unknowns figured out. So, and that's based out of a federal mandate. So here's this opportunity to get some grant funds from the state to help with that. At NOCA to the city, pretty good deal. So we'll be putting that together and getting that submitted to, um, to Department of Health and we'll get that going. So that's on the inventory side. On service line replacements, uh, phase one, which is the very final sheet in the packet that pulled out. That's is a little left color folded, rest of it, the aerial photo. This shows the, the location of the twenty-five, uh, lead service lines for that project. And you'll remember, uh, talking about this project, these are the service lines where the public portion is known to be not lead. It's not unknown. We know it's not lead. And the private property portion from the curb stop into the building is known to need replacement. It's either lead or galvanized. So these are the ones where if you put together a project to replace that private portion, you will have a service line that is totally not lead, and there shouldn't be any surprises like, oh, shoot, the public portion is lead, what do we do now? Kind of a thing. So the, the public portion is known and the private portion is known to be lead. So that's these twenty-five services. So this is a plan sheet out of the, out of the plan set. Val's got a printed copy of that if you want to see that. It's not much more exciting than the sheet, but, um, but that's really the, the first project. The city has got, um, this is one through that intended use plan. Public Facilities Authority has offered the city a grant, a hundred percent grant for three hundred twenty-five thousand for replacement of those twenty-five lead service lines. So plans and specifications, those have been submitted. We're waiting to hear back from Department of Health if they've got any edits or changes. I don't anticipate any or nothing of really any substance. Um, and then once we hear back from them, then the project can go out to bid. And then the grant application with Minnesota Public Facilities Authority gets finalized. Val has been working on that. It's we're just really waiting for the project to be bid, for that to finalize. And then also the resolution that you've got submitted on that later tonight as well. That's part of it. So that's kind of where that one's at. It's all real close. This would be something I would expect for twenty twenty-five construction, late summer, um, early fall, that sort of thing. These service lines will be replaced by directional drilling, so there'll be a, uh, a hole by the curb stop. And then the pipe will be directional drilled into the building and then reconnected. So that's not a, not a whole lot of giant open pit kind of stuff. It should be relatively, it should look relatively modest. It's a technological marvel, but it looks like not a whole lot. So it's the same sort of deal where, you know, you drive down the road ditch and they're putting in all the, you know, fiber optic stuff that were in that, same, same sort of idea. So the action that I've got for you all to consider tonight on this, uh, would be to authorize bidding this project, um, once Department of Health is, is, um, said, yeah, that's fine, we'll add. So if you're interested in doing that tonight, that possibly saves us some time between now and, uh, and the next council meeting to do that. Um, I don't know when we'll hear back from Department of Health, but that's a thing for you to consider. You don't have to do it, but it's, has the possibility to tweak a little bit of time out of the schedule. So. Questions on that project?
Does that get, when they say it's a hundred percent funded, does that include engineering costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And that is basically it's filled back in, it's seated, it's
Correct.
when they leave, it's
Pretty much
hybrid in the, in the house and everything, yeah.
And there's another, there's an element to that one too, um, and this might be a question that, that people have or, or people get, I was reminded based on your sweatshirt. There are a lot of these, uh, service lines, there may be electrical grounding for the home electrical system through that existing metallic pipe. And so part of this involves having, um, an electrician come and take a look and see if any electrical work needs to be done. Uh, if they're gonna drill in a plastic pipe, then you lose that grounding of the plumbing. So take a look and see if anything needs to be done and then install and kind of upgrade a grounding system for that property, so. Um, so yeah, it's a whole deal, recede, patch it up, hook it up. Um, I should mention also with it, there's a, there's a federal requirement to provide each of these properties with a, uh, like a pitcher filter, like you'd have a, like a water pitcher, pitcher, um, not like a filter, a pitcher filter, um, for use for up to six months following that replacement. The thought being that, you know, if there's any, any sort of lead particulate that gets knocked loose, then that's a protection for, for those property owners. So, uh, that's included as well, so. Any questions? Is that one you want to take action on or wait for? What do you?
Yeah, I think
I would make a motion to authorize the bidding of the project.
I would second it.
Motion and a second to any other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we talked about those phases two, three, and four, the rest of those that kind of pair up with some possible water main projects. So you've got some maps of that. Um, you may be wondering, does that cover all of those services that are identified as lead? No, it does not. So if we combine all four of those, that addresses forty-seven of the sixty-one that are identified as needing replacement. So will that number of sixty-one that need replacement change based on this next round of inventory updates? It might. And so that's where the ones that are left of the two hundred and twenty-eight unknowns that remain. It's, a lot of that is, uh, a question of what's going on, on the public side between the curb stop and the water main. And the, the element of risk on a project there is that if you do the service line replacement, you have to end up with a fully non-led service line. So, um, there are some of these where we know the private side needs replacement, but we don't know on the public side. And there's not enough or enough density of them to say, okay, let's put this with a water main project, hit that thirty percent threshold and, and just take care of all of that. So that's where on the updating the inventory, I think is, you know, the hope is that we can clear up some of those unknowns. There'll be a there are plans for at least another round of inventory updating. They'll have actual potholing, which would be hydro excavating kind of down right by the curb stop to be able to look at the pipe on either side to classify that public portion. So you're not having to dig a hole through the road just to look at the pipe sort of thing. So I think probably once that step is done, that should really have those unknowns pretty well resolved by then, what I'm trying to mean. Then I think, uh, we'll be able to solidify some plans around the rest of those, um, where some of it's unknown, some of it's maybe lead, what's the, what's the story there? So that may screen some more in to kind of be part of a water main project, uh, which is, we just don't know. So, uh, if the city really was interested in replacing all of those, like right away, tear the bandaid off, get it all done at once. Um, that's a possibility, but there's, there's this potential substantial liability on the public side of, hey, is this scope bigger? Do we have to cut in the road, replace all the alarming, that's a pavement, that's what, so. If that's a thing that you're, that you're interested in, you're getting a whole lot of demand from the public, hey, we got to get this going. I mean, that's, that is a thing that we can, can look at. But I think the eight good step right now is definitely the both on picking up that inventory and then being able to plan on it. We've got a good, a good plan for forty-seven here so far, which is, uh, which is a pretty good start, so. Questions on those? Other phases of it, so. So you've got the maps there. If people have specific questions, um, Val's got a copy of those. If people are wondering, hey, get on some kind of a plan or not, that sort of thing. Um, for the, for these twenty-five that are planned for this first round of construction, we'll be working on some, some outreach. Can, right once we get the green light from Department of Health, we'll be doing a little more direct outreach to those homeowners. Uh, people can refuse, um, but I don't uh, they shouldn't. It's, uh, for a number of reasons they shouldn't, but they may, so, um, and that's, that's a possibility as well, so. Uh, but up to those first twenty-five that are all kind of in that same category, we've got a plan to get those going, so. That was fast.
Are you done?
Did I miss anything? Anybody wish I had time for?
No.
Okay.
You're good.
Nope, they're good.
Now you can go and
Very good.
Thank you.
Watch your live stream of
That's right, back to live streaming the special session. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, officials request communications, complaints, concerns.
There's a few.
And basically they've all been kind of dealt with.
Or being dealt with?
My big, yeah, my biggest thing is, you know, waiting for the full time officer, which we'll talk about later today, um, on all of them, yeah.
I thought that sidewalk on Main Street, we had decided just to fix that and put on their taxes or whatever.
No, we haven't really.
Remember what we decided to do.
I don't either.
Which one?
The one on Main Street.
The one that Jewel left, the old Weber one.
We had decided to fix that and put it on the tax.
I didn't think so because that tree's in the way, so why would you fix? Isn't that right by where that tree is?
I wanted to just get the tree out there at the same time.
Yeah, but the stump's not grown, didn't you mention?
And now he has a stump grinder. So. He can grind the stump and we can have for come in and do it. But I would like a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to grind the stump and then do the sidewalk and assess it on their taxes.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to any other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Motion carries. Another one is the community center, one that we probably should talk about a little bit. So welcome to politics.
I, I really want to put it out there though, thank you to whoever wrote this letter, because if one person has this question, I'm sure ten others do as well, so.
So Alicia, do you want to explain your letter? Because the majority of the people either watching or gonna re-watch this don't understand what
And I did, just so everyone knows, I did put, and updated council pack on the website just before the meeting that has the responses, just
Okay.
out there.
Okay.
So.
Perfect, you can.
Anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry, sorry. Um, so basically what I've been doing is kind of co-hosting these events with Amanda. Um, the goal was to get more people to sign up for library cards, and we have had quite a few people sign up. Um, she's not promoting her business in any way, and so with it being a non-exclusive wellness thing, to me, it falls under community events. I don't know how to phrase that any better. But I mean, other organizations that are non-exclusive have also used the library, or not the library, the community center. When it's more so something that's going to benefit one group of people, for example, like the PTA had come to me last year and I had the PTA had come to me last year and I had sent them on to you guys because to me, that doesn't seem like something that benefits the whole community. It benefits that particular group. And so that's kind of the way I've always looked at it is if it benefits the entire community or it could benefit the entire community, then that fee is waived. But if there's kind of that fine line, like, you know, it does benefit this, which could benefit this, but it could benefit that. I'll send it to you guys because to me, I feel like I need more assurance that I was right in that decision.
And that's where I am wondering if maybe it would just be a good idea to put something in policy.
Yes, we could do.
With that, with the rental policy as far as.
I can draft something up for the next meeting.
You know, um. When thinking about it, I think of it too, like in a, a community ed lens as well, a little bit, you know, that you're offering it as a service to the community, tying it in just as long as like, you know, the library is promoting it too. And then when you're promoting it, you're referring back to a sponsor by the library. I think that helps. Um, I think the difference is, is the ones here don't have any financial benefit where there is some financial benefit. So I think that's where the the person might be frustrated in their letter or having that question.
And I think even more so, it's, it's the appearance of conflict. You know, it, it's the fee, but it's also the appearance of conflict because you are on the council.
And so I think if we put something in policy, I think that then is, you know, because by doing this, then we're allowing this kind of process for anyone in the community. So say if I wanted to host a CPR class or, you know, somebody else wanted to do something that is beneficial for the whole community. So I think that's why if we get it in policy in black and white, then it eliminates that appearance of favoritism. Um.
But then how are, are you going to distinguish it between something that a fee is charged for and something that there's not a fee? Cause like a CPR class.
Would be a fee, yeah. If I did it for the community, yeah, it'd be a fee. But I mean, so some of these are, some of these aren't. So, but when you, but I was thinking today cause I sat and I thought about this for quite a while, you know, if you're looking at a like, which were not community ed, but community ed is a community service in a sense. So if we're providing that kind of service, there are some community ed programs that do charge a fee, you know, um, for like cooking classes or, you know, other things for time as well. They do. Um, and I don't know if the rate you charge, you know, I know that you do the reduced rate for having a library card. So there is a reduced rate for that. I don't know if it's a different rate versus doing like a personal session or not, like, you know, i- is it already a cheaper rate to begin with versus that? So, yeah. Or I mean, so like, so it is like a reduced rate versus doing like a private cooking lessons when you're doing a community ed cooking lesson. For it. Granted, again, we're not community ed, but we're offering as a community service. But yeah, I think that's something we'd have to put in the policy. I mean, I think that's what we need to maybe work on at our work session is to, how would we word this in policy?
And I think the part of it too is the library is not community ed, but they're still able to offer these things. You know, it doesn't have to be just about reading or that kind, you know what I mean? It can be these sorts of things. It's, it's not just strictly.
Yeah, it's not the first time you partnered with a business. I mean, S J Miller Arts or whatever it was had a event a lot of those.
Charged if she was doing her own private thing, she was charged. She didn't just get the room because it was, oh, we're friends. Like there's no favoritism there.
Yeah.
This stuff affects me too. I still have to pay the charge if I rent the community center. So there's not that. I, I see a difference between community events in a community center versus a private event in the community center. So that's, to me, that's where that difference kind of lies. And again, if I'm not comfortable with the decision, then I will send it on. So it's not just, um, I just didn't want to do it. It's, I genuinely do want a response from a group of people who.
And if there's, you know, has been shown concern in the appearance, you know, that some, you know, things are done in a not above the board way, then if we put it in black and white, then it should alleviate that.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, yes, allowing for one should allow for all as long as, you know, I think the part where we're going to have to do is stipulate what's considered beneficial to the community. I think that's going to be the gray area.
Mm-hmm. A very gray area that's going to be hard to define, I think.
I agree.
Anything else on it?
Anybody else? So maybe we just add that to our list in the back and on down the line. Our work session.
Okay. Building and zoning, network vests.
Well, there's putting on a patio. In a cement pad, so we asked for permit.
The motion. I'll second.
Without a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May opposed? Motion carries.
We're gonna jump to the school one. So I kept telling them that you guys don't even approve this to have, you know, the zoning change. So the school contacted me, a member of the school were contacted me as far as so they put the school up for bids. They had one bid come in that only wanted the gym and the auditorium. Part of the reason, I think in their discussion that they didn't want the whole thing was because of the way it's zoned. Cause currently it was R one, which is residential, which a school is an appropriate use in our one district. So they're thinking that this person doesn't want to buy it because it's not zoned correctly. To be like a just general commercial area. So they're looking at, okay, they'll rezone it so that it's ready to go. And then sell it. I have some reservations with that, but that's, I've talked to them about it, said, you know, without knowing the exact plans, I'm not sure how you guys go ahead and authorize the rezoning of that, that building.
That's what's going to be my concern.
Don't they have to do a variance request or whatever?
Yeah. And that's the zoning request for zoning. And then I have to send out the letters and go through all that and then you guys vote on it. So this is just more or less, I'm just letting you know, this is what, what they've asked for. Um, I haven't gotten the check yet, but when I do, um, I mean, I'll move forward with it because that's what you do, but.
Yeah, we have to, otherwise what is it? Sixty days it just passes? So we have to address it if they ask for it.
So you will.
And the letters go out to how far out again?
Two hundred feet, three hundred feet?
I thought it was five, but we might be right. I don't remember exactly.
Thinking.
Yeah, I gotta look it up, but I think it's two, three hundred. Um, that way. So. That's that.
There's not much we can do about it. Okay, with that. RTAs and you've got the meats building first.
Yep, we'll do the meats building first. So Mark is here, Mark, um, Weedman is here. So, okay, so first of all, last week I got one signature to get the building back. I didn't think both needed to come. So now I'll work on that second signature. Um, but when we get that done, Mark would like to buy the building for a dollar. And work on it from the inside out to see if it's worth saving. And then at that point, whatever. So I don't know, you could probably.
Basically, long story short, I'm asking you to let me use my dime to find out if it's feasible instead of your own. That's it. The goal is to, at some point, uh, when it's actually done, uh, Mr. Office, I'd like to make it two-story, have office space above, um, some below and then, you know, maybe a little something down there. I don't know. But definitely some office space up top. At a minimum. And I, I would rather do it on my dime than have it done on your dime. And if it needs to be torn down, then you know, I know some people who would love a rage room.
One thing I will say, I was going to say is now, and I don't know if this is true or not, maybe you know, Miller made the comment about having it inspected for asbestos.
That's one of the things. So in doing that, um, in working from the inside out, um, I've got to pull at least a portion of the ceiling out so I can see what's up there. And then I can have someone come in, take a look. If there's asbestos in there, then I'll drop it. We're done.
Probably the biggest thing is, is if, if we sell it to you for a dollar, is we would want a timeline. So we would, we, the, you know, we'd put like, isn't that what we do?
That's what we had on the last one. Yeah.
It would be like a two-year timeline that if you don't do something with it, then
Like I said.
We're gonna take it back again.
Yeah. I mean, at, at that point, it's, if anything, worst case scenario is you guys get it back. Hopefully in better condition, solid, worst case scenario. And you haven't spent any of the city's money.
And probably the only other thing is, is we probably have to put that on bids maybe.
That's what I was.
Oh.
But I don't know that we can just. We can, but.
We did for, for them, didn't you?
I don't remember, did we?
I don't think we put it out on bids.
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did.
E D A can sell what they think is of best interest to the community.
Right.
So that's, that's one way of doing it, which would be fine. So, yeah, we probably don't have to because we didn't. So.
Yeah, it was just a.
It would be nice to save it and.
I'll, I'll do my very best to, to save it.
Or if you have to build new, build new.
We make a motion.
In, in work.
That's all we did.
No, I just got one signature out of the two.
In going from inside out, it'll.
I gotta get the one.
I'll be able to get a little bit more.
Okay.
So, well, and then I suppose E D A essentially has to just make the recommendation to you so that you don't have to put it out on bids.
Probably.
So we'll work through that.
Try to get it by the next E D A meeting and.
Right.
We can bring that up.
I don't know. If my plan helps or hinders you, I just, it's an idea.
Well, it, it, uh, it certainly doesn't hinder us, but, uh, hopefully it helps. Who knows?
Well, I'm hoping.
Oh. That's, but that's about all we can tell you right now is, I don't see a problem with it, I guess, in general. So.
All right. You want me to put the dollar on the table?
No. Not our building yet.
I'm paying in pennies.
So.
Now I'll be in touch.
When it's our building, we'll.
Yep.
Address it. So.
So then if, if that's, um, is there a is there any objection to me going in there and doing a little recon?
It's not our building.
Oh, so I can't even go in there?
Well, we can't, we can't tell you it's okay to go in there is what I'm trying to tell you.
There's a, did that big gate a hole?
It's not our building, so we can't give you direction there.
I don't know them to connect you with them.
Okay. I'll look in the big hole.
Thank you. So then we've got, we already did the lead service.
Nope, that one is the ordinance. So last time we okayed to put the ordinance out there. So we put it in the paper, we put it online and now you have to adopt the ordinance.
Can I make a motion to adopt it?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to any other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May opposed? Motion carries. Uh, stop this container.
So basically it comes down to the fact that how do we right the wrong? And, you know, originally I did, I said he did not need a permit. Cause that's where you would have taken care of saying no to the container. Um.
If he knew it wasn't going to be a container like that.
I didn't think so. I mean, the person, and like I told him, I said, you know, just the perception of you show somebody, even he showed the neighbors, you show something on a piece of paper compared to what it actually is. You know, especially when it comes to the size of it and stuff, it just really. So anyway, um, in talking with Matt and that, he figured that we would be um, responsible for the move. So Chad, um, got an estimate for the move, so seven hundred dollars. Chad did ask there would be some site prep. Um, in talking with, with Matt, I told him I'm not I'm okay, well, in, you know, seven hundred dollars is okay to present to you guys. I don't know that I would pay for site prep just because I feel like
Nope.
That's something that's done. As long as lasting that he could have, you know, we can pick up the gravel again, whatever. So, yeah. Um, so, yeah.
I, I don't like that. There was a misrepresentation as to what was being moved on there. Um, I don't like that we missed calling it out as needing a permit. Um, in the last month, I have looked around at other properties and there are other properties that have structures that look similar to this. So as much as I think that it's an eyesore, I really don't want to spend city money to have it moved. I, I think a way to make it right, depending on how many other neighbors nearby are totally irked by it. Let them keep it, but put it between, in the proper setbacks would be a suggestion that I've.
It is in, is it in the proper setbacks?
I think that's why it got brought to us.
And we decided not to have it surveyed yet because just have it moved.
Do, do we have to pay for a survey?
Yes.
How much? About twenty-five hundred dollars.
It's whatever.
I should spend the seven hundred bucks on.
I, I think we should just leave it too. I
I, I think it's a, a, a great way to have taken advantage of a situation by calling it a storage.
It's big. It's big, but I don't think it looks like you said, any worse than a lot of the other buildings in town. And you know, when, when Chad says he did, did his due diligence, he did on asking about the building permit. But it's still his responsibility to stay within the setbacks and everything. So. But that being said, I, I went by and looked at it tonight. I, I hadn't been back there really and looked at it all. There is another garage that's just as close to the alley or what's considered the alley there is that container is.
But it was probably grandfathered.
Yeah, but we don't know that. So I guess my point is, is it's not like it's someplace where there isn't another structure already that close to the alley. So. We, we don't currently have an ordinance against having a storage container, do we?
We do not. So, but that's my question now then. So what happens if are you, are, are you okay with allowing those all over town? Or do you want to put an ordinance into place to prevent it?
Well, you're doing it for one person, why tell the other people you can't do it, that isn't fair.
Well, it was a screw up, but I'm, I'm not sure, I'm opposed to storage units like that, or. What do you call them, containers?
Containers?
Containers like that.
Awful, okay, put some vines over it. Sorry, it looks bad.
It does, I'm, I'm opposed to any more. I also feel like we should just leave it alone and let this one basically get grandfathered in because it was an error.
So the school has one sitting by the school building right now in a residential, do we go out and tell them to move it?
But they got stuff stored in there from the school.
Doesn't matter, it's. It's a storage.
Was that part of the construction?
No, it's been there for years.
Is it permanent now, oh, alright.
By the bus garage, right by the bus garage, it sat there for three, four years for sure. But I don't remember them ever getting a building permit for it either, so do we go tell them?
Are they keeping it?
I have no idea.
Cause I, I put a lot of desks in that stuff.
For extra classroom space.
Well, that's what we did when we took stuff out, that's where it went in there.
Right, and did they sell it, are they keeping it, who knows?
Who knows, you'd have to ask the school board then.
And then what do they do when they move it over to the new school building or?
Right.
Whatever, I mean, that's, this is kind of like.
Pandora's box.
Right, and I kind of feel, it's just my opinion that I'd like to fix the error. Um, and then put it into place that there are no more, but if there's more around town. I mean, I mean, this is the only one I know of, and I guess the school one, but. I don't know, I, I mean, to me. Yeah.
All right, well, let's, let's talk about language then at the work session. But for now, we'll leave this one, and nobody else is putting shipping containers on their properties.
I better hurry up and get one then.
Well, that's what it be. That is what, um. Yeah.
I can't imagine they're cheap.
Cheaper than building.
Think so, well, I mean, a portable shed.
They don't pour slab or anything, I mean, put it on gravel and it's got a metal floor and, or it's off the ground, so. Just like a utility shed.
Cause we talked about that before, we talked about this at the last meeting. Essentially, this is no different. Than a camper that somebody deems as storage.
Yep.
So.
Does it have wheels?
No.
No.
Just take wheels off the camper.
To me, to me, this is the same as a portable storage shed, it's a big one. But to me, it's the same thing, but the whole thing is, is they have to get a building permit to put it there.
And then is it any different than if it's a semi trailer that they take the wheels off of?
I don't know.
Just asking.
Semi trailer would be considered a vehicle though, whether you take the wheels off or not. I've seen those, I haven't seen them in town, other than, I think there's actually one sitting right back here now. But it's still got the wheels on.
And how hard is it gonna be for somebody to just say, somebody sells their house? I'm not buying it because there's a, uh. Semi trailer sitting there.
Yeah, I mean. Ensures the next person can come in and, um.
But we also have like, right, isn't it, can you only have so much percentage of your property covered?
Permanent, yeah, like thirty percent.
And what is that for percentage, you think?
And so storage sheds don't co- count on that?
It would.
So there's the house, the garage, and the shipping container on that property.
And then a patio.
And I was good.
Oh, that garage belongs to that house.
No, that other, the other garage is in the next property over, the one that's. The one on that property.
The one by the, by the alley you're talking about, it's got that garage.
And so that's where it wouldn't have even like. It would have been way over and.
But if it's a portable shed, like you're saying, and it's the homeowner's responsibility.
He owns the home.
That.
He owns the home.
Right, but if it's a, if it's a shipping container, and it's a portable shed, which is what it's for.
So. But then the other thing is, is, so this gets grandfathered in from any setbacks then too, is what we're saying.
Yep, right, it would be.
Unless we wanna pay to have a survey done.
I, I, I'd say leave it.
I, I, I think we got taken advantage of. In, in. An unfortunate way.
No, we, we never did.
And what's sad is people are gonna listen to this and they're gonna say, oh, well, I'm just gonna do what I want, and we'll see if they catch me and change my mind. Make me do something, so.
That's why I really.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to go there, I, this was, he come up and asked about a building permit and was told he did not need one. Now, that was the wrong answer, because, like I said, I've got, I put sheds in before. I've got building permits, but, so it was just. The, the answer was wrong. So equating that to somebody can walk up and do whatever they want and just say, well, I can get away with it, that's a totally different scenario.
That, that's a valid fear though, similar to the tree.
Because then, then you walk up to them, or you send the, the officer, or we said our ci- city attorney, and you tell them, move it. Because you have to, this was, quite frankly. The city's mistake as much as his, now whether. He knew what he was doing or not, it's another thing, but he did ask about a building permit and we told him no, so.
And when I went and looked at it, I did notice it's. I've seen shipping containers for storage containers, my aunt has a couple out at her shop. They're not near as nice as the quality as the one they hear with the side doors, and, I mean, it is, it is in good shape currently. So, I mean, there's that, it's not.
It should still have to be in setbacks though. I mean.
It should, and that's where the building permit, what it came into play is, we would have.
And, and I agree with you. That it should have to be in the setbacks. But again, we don't know exactly where the setbacks are, is what you're telling.
And, right, and to me, then it's on him to figure out his property line. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Cause if he had applied for the permit and he needed to know where the property lines were, we would not pay for that survey, he would have had to.
But we would have figured that out had he applied, that's where it was our mess up.
Because of the original mess up, there's cons- cons, you know, there's, it's just a trickle-down effect, a domino effect of all the different things that. Would have been caught or should have been caught. And that's, that's really what the big problem is.
But I think there's been other storage sheds put in town without permits either, so, I mean, it's just, it's a whole.
Have any of his neighbors complained about this thing?
Yes.
That's why it was brought to us.
So, I guess I'm more of the, I'd rather pay the seven hundred to fix it and have it done and no grandfathering and. The neighbors happy, we fixed our mistake, then the preceding mistakes have been fixed. Could you negotiate doing half of it, cause I mean, it was our, it was the city's sake. But at the same time, there was a little bit of deception there, so, I mean.
And he doesn't feel there was, so.
And it, cause if he, he's saying, you know, you said he went and talked to the neighbors and stuff, so. He did what he thought he was, he was told to do, so I don't feel like there was anything on his part. That.
All right, if we're gonna make him fix it, I feel like we have to pay the seven hundred to, to get it to move, I get that.
Right.
To me, the only option is either leave it or pay the seven hundred.
Where are you gonna move it to?
He's gonna move it out of town.
Oh, out of town.
Can we get a few other quotes, are there any other companies that will move something like this, or is?
I think this is where he bought it from. I don't know what other companies would move it that would take the live.
Well, and you gotta have something to lift it.
How big is it?
It's a shipping container.
It's like a semi trailer, but it don't have wheels.
Empty, steel?
Yeah, steel.
I don't know about empty, I don't.
If you can get it right off.
So, I don't know.
Do it that way.
So I feel like our, yeah, our options are either we leave it and it stays exactly where it's at, and we change our. You know, thank you. Words, the ordinance, if we don't want these in the city to reflect that. Or. We move it and avoid the issue. But we still need to change the ordinance to at least say that shipping containers are considered a storage shed and must need a permit for application. Which, yes, would have also applied to the school. So what that one reflects is that they got a storage shed and didn't apply for a permit.
Call the school tomorrow and ask them if they just rented that first, the storage stuff that we moved out, if you could, and then. Cause I, I take it they're coming to get it, I mean, now that the auction's over.
It's been there for three, four years minimum, back where they park the buses on the west side of that.
Yeah, I know. It's been there. It's tannling.
Yeah, it's been there.
I know, cause I put desks.
It's a lot of years. But anyway, that's here nor there, let's work on this one.
And I guess, so it's, yeah.
I'm gonna get hold of school so I can move that one down to my place.
So it's. Get permit.
I actually thought when this come up, that he, he got the one from the school is what I thought.
I thought it was too, at first.
But, uh, anyway.
I mean, so what are everybody's thoughts, leave it and it is what it is, and move forward, or. Pay the seven hundred dollars, correct it, so there can be no.
Can we get a couple other quotes? Or are we just gonna take the seven hundred?
I guess if it were me, and it was mine, and I'm being told to move it. I get a pick by company. Possibly, I mean, I, I, I would want the company that put it in, so I know it's not also gonna get damaged, they know what they're doing. So I don't know if there are, you know, I would want a company that does this. To not damage my investment, I mean, that's me, I mean.
I honestly, looking at a seven hundred dollar bill to move something like that out of town. I don't think is unreasonable, and I don't think you're gonna find anyone around here to do it any cheaper.
I bet you won't either.
So that's why I wasn't thinking that he would need another, otherwise normally, I'm the one that says.
You are.
I think we need more bids.
And, and I would, and I'm thinking too, from the person of whose property. If it's your mistake and not mine, I want where I know my property is gonna be intang- or maintained and. Properly moved and, uh. You know, just, cause the cheapest isn't always the best, you know, they might be doing something different, so if you know that. I mean, I don't think seven hundred, I was expecting worse.
I did a Google search, just. To figure out like what.
So, I mean, for me personally, it doesn't bother me personally, but I'm not the one who has to look at it or be next to it, or.
Six to twelve hundred is what this one says to move a. Empty container being moved under two hundred miles.
It's not an empty can.
Well, they may make him empty, I haven't, I don't know how they do it.
The biggest problem is get to get the actual company out here, you're gonna pay miles, and that's, that's the part, that's the hard part.
You know, out in the boones, out in the boonies.
So anybody wanna make any motions on this, or?
I would make a motion to pay the seven hundred for it to get moved out of town. But no site prep.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, and I would be opposed to that. But that means that I'm the only one, right? So it's four to one. Motion carries. Uh, City Hall Electrical Panel.
I mean, town same was, I mean, the place hasn't burned down, well, do we just go ahead and replace it, or do we wait?
And budget it.
Right, I.
Is that checked when we were gonna do that?
Yeah, that's why it come up now, is he's, but is he just saying it, well, it should just be done, or is it?
Can we make a call to Andersons?
What did they say?
I mean, if they did the bid, like estimate.
I have no idea, I didn't miss the first time.
No, I mean, well, this is a bid.
Right, so they obviously looked at it.
Yeah.
And isn't this a high enough of a price of a bid that we would need multiple quotes?
No, it's seventy-five.
Oh, that's seventy, okay. Can't remember, thank you for reminding me.
That's a stupid question.
And please can you remove the two hundred amp before the circuit, you know, P E stab block panel out to. One, two hundred amp, fifty-four circuit D panel. Estimate will include a new two hundred amp bypass meter socket as well. I think that bypass socket is probably what they needed for.
For the generator.
For the generator.
What's your bid?
Forty-six hundred.
I guess I would wanna know if there's something that has to be done now, or we could.
Hold off.
Hop on and fudge it, I mean, I don't. And I guess if it's dangerous, dangerous, like, yeah, but I don't know. I'd like a.
More information?
Yeah.
I'm with Lee on that.
I mean, unless somebody else wants to make a motion, not that you always say, I took your words.
I don't know, it's just, I don't know, I didn't read my packet till today, but. Them are the type of things that should call in the afternoon and ask that question, so we could have called Anderson. I was actually out there at five thirty. Could ask that question. But. Anyway.
I didn't have that question until I got here, so.
I didn't either, cause I didn't know like what for sure, like usually sometimes you have. That like, oh, they said.
This, when they.
Yeah, so I didn't, no, we didn't know. If that makes sense.
Uh, let's move on then, nobody wants to take any action there? So then we got N R C A Radkey Property Tree.
So why do we have ordinances? So this is one of those where. There is a tree on the Radkey property, that's the pink house on Ash Street that. Uh, nobody has lived in for a few years, they have not paid taxes, nobody's keeping it up, um. People on the taxes are both deceased, or all three of them are deceased. I did post the mowing and this letter about the, or the mowing stuff on their door, just because, just in case somebody does show up. Did the same for that Jordan, um. He took a look at it. Cause Marge came and she's like, I don't even sit in a certain room in my house because I'm afraid this tree's gonna fall on it. He looked at it and he's like, yeah, it needs to come down.
It's split on Jeff's side, and the good part is leaning over Marge's property.
Is it something that you can take down?
The baby's too tall, I can't. I can't get there with a truck to get it.
Yeah, no, that was just one of the questions that I had thought of.
I mean. This is one of those properties that it's gonna be an issue, because yes, we can take, and I think we should take it down, but. We'll take it down and assess it to the taxes, the problem is, they're not paying the taxes. And then with the street assessment, that property has like fifteen grand against it. And that's just life, so it's.
We, we get to choose whether we waive that or not at that sale.
Time, yeah.
At the sale.
At the time of the sale, but right now, as of now, that's what it looks like, is, you know, it's fifteen grand. For this. In a little while.
Yeah.
So. Anywho's.
I'm sorry, it's one of those things of.
Public secret.
What do you, what do you do?
And then do I wait till June twenty-third, and can we do it whenever he has time?
It's June twenty-third, the thirty days?
Yeah.
I feel like we have to wait the thirty days.
Just in case, cause if we do it on day twenty-eight.
Be hard luck. Be our luck.
And somebody shows up and says, taking Drake grandma's house.
That's another.
Lot of days.
Two weeks.
We don't get that much wind.
Uh, I know, that's what I worry about.
You have, see, you have to follow your policy.
Right, yeah.
I mean.
My motion would, yes, is make it down after the thirty days with no response.
Letter certified knowing fully it's gonna come back. It's a waste of money. Right, it is what it is. But the same standpoint, you know, when somebody says, well, they have homeowner's insurance. Nope. There ain't nobody having homeowner's insurance on that side of the fence, so. We're, yeah, it's just our problem.
I don't think that, yeah, I, I don't think we should. Should do it sooner than that though.
Yeah, that's fine. We're, we're. Only two weeks out.
Did you make a motion?
I did.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more to this discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
By opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
RCA wetter camper.
So Craig has a camper um, to the east of his building that he's living in during the week. Yeah. Is that something we're going to allow?
How long has he been doing this?
I did it all last year.
Would like to address it for our ordinance.
Okay. For the parking ordinance.
I don't think we can allow, I mean.
I don't wanna be this kind of town folks. I.
Well. So let's say Lena's kids, get kicked out of their houses. They pull up a camper and wanna live in, in the camper on the property. You gonna allow that?
Well, technically, he's not living in this camper. He's got a house that he goes to. I'm assuming about every weekend.
But we also have a campground. It's what, four hundred dollars for the whole season?
But. Again, why are we only talking about this camper? The cement plants had one out there.
Well, that was one I was gonna bring up, so she noticed it.
So are we throwing this one in there too?
I didn't notice that because it was an inter residential area.
Last month, we told people we were not gonna do this with this ordinance. And now all of a sudden, now all of a sudden we're doing it. We told Mike Volmer to park his camper on his lawn. And we would leave him alone. And now we're going after somebody with a camper on their lawn. I, I don't like it. I'm sorry.
I just don't like the living in part of it.
I, I don't like the living in part of it when we have a campground in town.
Yeah, we all can have our opinions on it.
And we don't. We said we didn't want campers parked. We initiated that to not have campers parked on the street. So when I can drive down the street and have to turn a corner, you. You're not doing it in a camper. Or having to drive around a camper and go into oncoming traffic, which this one is not, but that's the same concept.
It is, but we told. The guy on Burt Street that as long as he basically kept his yard up and stuff, we weren't gonna bother him about trailers. And now we're bothering somebody about a trailer. It's my opinion on it, so.
I'm with Liddell on this.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't like the fact that he's doing it this way, but. I, I, I respect what people do sometimes to run their businesses too.
I do.
And, and. It's, it's what he's gotta do, I guess is, yeah, he could move it down to the campground and stay down.
My uncle lived in the cities and ca- in a camper, in a campground.
Yeah. I don't wanna be this, I don't wanna be the cities.
Well, he wants to camp in his camper.
Uh, it's my opinion on it, so.
Is that? The prop, is that his property?
I don't think so.
It is not.
But I'm assuming that he's got permission. I never knew that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I always thought it was his lot too, but.
Did too.
No, it is not. Does he, has he talked to this person in California? I have no idea.
Well, I didn't know that. It'd be different if they were complaining to us about him being on our lot. Uh, that would change everything, but.
Yeah, I thought that was his lot, I was gonna say.
I never knew that either, so.
Wow.
I guess I just.
Any motion?
Looking at not setting that precedent or.
Yes, I'd make a motion to follow the ordinance, but I make a motion to leave him alone.
Let me come follow the second that one, which be mowing. Like we said, we told them people we weren't gonna do that.
We got one motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? I don't know that we actually needed a motion to do that, but.
Yeah.
But it's fair, so all in favor?
Aye.
By opposed? Motion carries. RCA for EDA meeting date.
So we are struggling to get quorums at the meetings for EDA's. Um, we haven't had a meeting since December because we can't get a speaking forum. Um, I did have three members attend this last time, but of course we couldn't conduct official business. So we were trying to find different ways to get. Um, the meetings attended. So we'd like to change the meeting date to be the first Tuesday of the month. Um, we're asking the council to adopt the new meeting date. And then we can push that going forward and hope that, that. Works.
I would make a motion to approve that change.
Uh, motion and a second to any other discussion on it. And the only discussion I've got for it is, is if anybody listening or watching this or whatever is interested in being on the EDA. We need people on the EDA. We got what, one open spot for sure or two?
One, possibly two.
Okay.
So are you two both still actively on it?
Yeah.
Okay, then I guess I won't put my name in.
For full disclosure, I was one of the ones who missed most of the meetings. Throughout the winter because they don't work with my schedule on Wednesday. Uh, Tuesday should work a lot better for me. I don't know about everybody else, but.
Okay.
Um, so we've got a motion and a second. Other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
By opposed? Motion carries. Uh, RCA ambulance director resignation. Point of new director.
So I did get his, his uh, letter of resignation, which I put on your table today. Um. So he has officially resigned as of July first. Um, you know, when we originally set up that EMT position. That was our goal was the venture to make the, the director as well or that position, the director as well. Um, so now Kim's been on vacation, but now we'll start working with her to get her trained in as.
Director.
As the director. Um, yeah, we'll just.
Because we need to make motions to accept the resignations. I'd make a motion to accept both resignations.
Well, and the other resignation was Adam, Adam Fuchs.
I'll second it.
Used to live in town, no longer, or used to work in Southern, he doesn't.
Is he far enough out that?
He lives in Storden and now he's moving to Westbrook.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. That will be that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
By opposed?
Do you ever talk, get back to you about the other building company?
He said he didn't feel it was worth the effort because it's, we're so small.
Yeah, so they would only be charging us for like an hour. It, it would save us a lot of money.
Would they be even willing to do it as with his? Okay, no, I can have them answer the questions, but he said he didn't think it was worth it and he just left it at that.
Oh, no, they, they would definitely take the business and it would save us a lot of money.
I'm gonna check in then.
So I didn't realize that on this RCA, that we also. Talking about Kim's, the position. Cause you said, I'm not sure if we appoint her or just add it to her job duties. I feel like we didn't have that discussion yet.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the motion was to accept the.
Right. But part of the RCA is.
I feel like it's added to those duties.
Well, when, as far as just appointing her, we should make sure the ambulance crew is. On board with that too.
But I thought that was part of the eventual process of hiring for that position, is that they would roll over and direct to director. Since they're gonna be a full-time ambulance, that they have the. Already paid time to be doing that, so we weren't paying another position. I thought that was part of it, is that eventually we would be eliminating. That director pay because it would be rollover as to the duties as to this position.
And then I just wanna be devil's advocate. Do you get to pick your boss? Oh, I have them, just leave the door open behind.
Yeah, cause I can quit. And so can they.
But I really thought, I mean, that's why I, we, I was talked about when we, we made that position, I thought that it was eventually gonna be.
Roll her over.
Well, and. Part of it and so that that would be an extra few thousand dollars that would go towards the salary. If we're gonna maintain this position beyond a year.
But for now, let's say we don't maintain this position beyond the year. Then do we have to break that job out again? Or are there any extra steps that we would need to do?
We would just have to find an ambulance director and make it what it is now.
Okay. Or allow her to stay as the ambulance director and then just eliminate the rest of the full-time job.
Yeah, I kinda felt like that was just to cross that bridge when we get to it. Thing, I mean, you can always undo. But I, it was my, my thought, I guess, I, I felt like we talked about it was that that was part of the. Cost we'd have mentioned absorbing into that position.
I think no matter which way we're going here, we've gotta. Have a motion to either have her be the la- the ambulance director or not. Whether you call it appointing or just adding it to her duties. We, we should have a motion to.
I would make a motion to have Kim be the director as part of her position within the city.
So then do we have to rewrite her position description to include the director? Because I.
We do.
I mean, that's, that's where I was getting at is how much work is it to join them together? Instead of just keeping them as two separate things. And then, cause all of a sudden if she quits. What if the next person only wants to be the ambulance director? We gotta break it apart again.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just trying to think ahead.
We're meeting with, I'm, Debbie and I are meeting with her on Monday, next Monday.
I mean, it's fine to keep it separate, but then it's, we gotta add that extra to her wage then, so now we're paying more again.
The thing, that's the thing that bothers me just because I feel like she might be thinking she deserves more by taking on this duty.
But really, we weren't training her for that already. So I understand where you're coming from. And I do believe that that is what the discussion was. But, you know, I just.
Yeah, job description wise, yes.
But we have a job description for both. And then we'll make now a new one. I mean, it doesn't, we can just go back to the old ones that need to be, right?
Well, her duties as part of her job. Is technically she could just be on the ambulance while she's working, right? Where if you're the director, you're gonna have to do this. As a full ambulance member, I would think.
We've had ambulance directors that weren't even EMTs. I mean.
Were EMTs, but didn't work on the service.
Well, well, even Nick wasn't an EMT when he took it over the last time.
Oh, it had, it had lapsed.
It had lasted. I mean, he obviously had done it before and had the knowledge, but I mean, technically it wasn't even an EMT.
So I guess.
Was just rolled with the punches of whatever we.
So are we, are we saying that? She's just ambulance director while she's working?
No, she would be ambulance director at all times. Where's your thought process going with it?
Well, I, I was just. If, if we roll it all into one, I thought the job description said you had to be on call. While you were working. So I guess my point is, is. Is, is she taking weekend evening call and all that? I don't.
She's doing her sixty hours by being on from six to six, ideally.
Yeah.
And so she's getting her sixty hours in, but it's just because she's not asking for that extra coverage.
You don't have to be on the service to be the ambulance director.
I understand that. That's not what I'm asking.
Okay, I was confused.
Saying that, is it? If you make it part of her duties, then. Uh, can she? Can she, uh, basically on a weekend, if nobody covers, just say. Don't worry, I'm not ambulance director, cause I'm not working.
My, my hours, my work hours are from this to this because of a work schedule. Yeah, that's, that's kinda, I had thought of that too.
Knowing ambulance director should have to take call because there's nobody to take it if they are not willing to just. Volunteer, because that's, that's the burnout factor that we've always dealt with.
And that's not currently in place.
Do.
No.
So that. If that happened, that wouldn't be a change.
I think it, I think something in the, her descrip- work description though, needs to state something like, you know, what if she wants to take a. Oh, I suppose if she took a shift, then she's just on the ambulance crew.
Right, so like right now, what we do is she's in the calendar or the schedule thing twice. As you know, Kim city and just Kim. Cause her city hours don't get counted towards getting paid for on-call hours. So that's how we differentiate it. So you know, for the eight hours she's at work, she's city Kim. She's not getting all the extras. Regular Kim, it counts towards her call time and. The other side, the volunteer side of the service.
So anyhow, there's still a motion on the table.
What was the motion?
To appoint Kim and uh, assign it as. Part of her job description. You know, it's part, it's part of not her job description, it's part of this city hi- hired city position. For that.
So then the director pay that was going to Tim would no longer be getting paid. Because she's getting, she's the director on her city job, city paid.
No. Do we handle it like we would police? Or if they get, or public works, and if she gets called out on the weekend. Like, let's say there was a really bad call and they wanna do the meeting stuff or whatever. Or, you know, she reaches out to all those people. Do you do just an automatic two hour, you know, do we handle it that way? Just like if they were called out.
Wouldn't be considered a call out.
Right.
Emergency call.
Which I'm fine with, but I mean, that's something you guys have to.
I think you almost have to if you're making it part of her.
Right.
Of her position.
Yes.
Sure.
No, yeah.
And the director pay was only fifteen hundred dollars?
And I don't think we're gonna go over that in an emergency call out.
No.
I thought it was more, I thought it was two.
I thought it was like twenty-three hundred or something. I thought it was like twenty-three hundred or something.
I thought it was twenty-five as the director.
Good thing Val's looking it up.
Oh, Ra-Ra. I don't know, I gotta look it up to make sure.
But I think we're in the general vicinity, I feel like.
Right. Fifteen hundred. Twelve fifty for assistant. And assistant pay should go down, which Debbie. Expect. Because she expects to give some of her. Because she's full-time.
I'll second your motion.
Not a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. RCA pool employees.
Just acknowledging?
Yeah, this is acknowledging. I did, or Mindy did get a resignation from Andy Zoe. She got an opportunity to work closer to home. Um, so she gave her two-week notice. So maybe did let her know that, you know, the city would not pay for her. Training group for the entire season. Um. But yeah, so she's, she is working for us and she will work the next two weeks for obligated shifts and then she's done.
Okay.
So the RCA is basically to okay hiring. The staff.
Okay, you got it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries. Uh, RCA police chief hiring.
I need a motion? Do you accept that? Background check or what?
Yes, and then hire with the one-year probation is all that was. And I bet, yes, that standard is what Josh said, which.
I'll make that motion.
Um, and he did give us the start date of June sixteenth, which is a week from today.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
So for the people at home, we have now hired Derek Determan as the full-time police chief.
In June sixteenth.
On June sixteenth.
Back to the pool employee, do we need to get a resignation from Abby or not?
Haven't had a text for her, then she texted Mindy. I can print that out. Um, yeah.
Well, I didn't know if we have approved that resignation like we do the other ones.
Brought it up as before we did the list, so technically.
We can include it in that? Alright.
That we're ever gonna include it all?
Uh, Redwood County assessing service contracts.
So they gave us a contract. They want it to now be a three-year instead of two years and they're gonna keep the price for the.
So yeah, let's make a motion to.
And I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Find much of life that hasn't, isn't going up, right?
And carries, uh, ours, REC projects for this summer.
You stopped in and just said they had two proposed projects, um. From the Lutheran school, the Lutheran church north to the school, and that is all behind the properties on that tree line. Now explain to him that that road that we use to the pool and stuff is not a platted alley and there is no platted alley in the back. Um. So. It was up to him to figure that out. What they wanted to do cuz he asked if there was easements and I'm like. Have no clue.
So. We don't know if there's a right-of-way there even.
No.
No, there is none.
So if there is an easement.
Yeah, how do they do that? I don't, they, they must have an easement for their poles and stuff, but. Whatever.
That's up to them. And the other one is Ash Street. They're on the north or the east side of the properties and they're gonna bring them to the front side. On the right-of-way. Justin just asked that the trans, they ask about setting their transformers cuz I guess one project they weren't very good about that and then. Didn't set them in the actual right-of-ways and on property that. We didn't own.
Yeah, and there's some. Properties there that are not gonna be happy about that.
No, imagine.
Again.
Alright, well.
Kind of beyond our.
There's anything, any other concerns you had? I mean, I'll let Dee know that we wanna be, you know, talk to Justin before he sets those, but.
That would be my main one is make sure. Make sure the property owners are involved too, cuz. Okay, well, so we don't really need a motion on that then?
I don't know if there's anything you don't, if there's nothing you guys want, no.
Uh, RCA for work session dates, topics.
So I, I look at the two dates, kinda like we've done in the past where one's a tour date, one is a meeting date. Um, for you that have been on the tour before, if you don't wanna show up, whatever, that's your choice. Um, but we have enough new that we shouldn't be doing it. Um. Yeah. I did June twenty-sixth for you, as far as the tour date goes.
We're gonna end up lost there.
Okay.
I'll have to plan a different day. I mean, I got yoga that day.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it depends what works for everybody.
If you don't mind me taking along, I'll take the day off from work and.
Well, otherwise.
Which.
The June twenty-sixth would be what is?
Thursday.
I didn't want it, well, Justin's got a family for. Like the nineteenth through the twenty-second, so I don't wanna nail him on the twenty-third because, you know, it's kinda nice to the boy.
How about the twenty-fourth for the tour?
Teaching yoga that day.
Twenty-third?
Hey, I'm open. I think so, yeah.
Or the twenty-seventh, twenty-third or twenty-sixth, either way.
Doesn't matter me.
I think the twenty-fifth, we have a sound bath.
Way too busy.
I'm just trying to spread some love.
Sounds like it's the twenty-third.
Wanna make a motion for that? Or do we wanna pick both dates? Okay, so we got twenty-third is the tour date, right?
So I'd rather have our meeting after the tour date, so. Um, can I, the suggested topics, can we add the personnel policy? We have not yet merged the new required. Stick and save time with our current policy.
So the thirtieth, the first is gonna be an EDA one?
Well, you said now, oh, well, no, sorry.
Wednesday the second, or is that getting too close to the fourth and people are gone? I will be leaving. For a few weeks. Either July sixth or seventh.
I mean, we can do it before, I just didn't know.
Well, does June thirtieth work?
Yeah, for me. I thought you said that was gonna be our, oh, no, that's not our thing.
Sure, June thirty. And then whatever I said earlier to put on the list, you got that there too, right?
Containers and policies.
Cuz I already forgot what it was.
I'm thinking, God, what was it?
Is that gonna be six o'clock also, or you wanna do six-thirty?